Okay, I'd like to call to order the Westchester zoning commission meeting for July 20th, 2020. Mr. Dawson, roll call please.
Mr. Groh.
Present.
Mr. Han.
Here.
Mr. Murphy.
Here.
Mr. Reiner.
Here.
And Mr. Williams.
Here.
We have Corum.
Okay, we got some old business. We need to approve the June 15th, 2020 meeting minutes. Are there any changes to those meeting minutes?
I had none.
None.
No? Okay, would someone like to make a motion?
Make a motion. Will you approve the minutes of, uh...
June...
Second?
June 15th. We have a motion. We have a second. Mr. Dawson, roll call.
Mr. Groh.
Yes.
Mr. Han.
Yes.
Mr. Murphy.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Motion carries, five zero. Commission needs to approve resolution ZMA 04-20, break two, Republic Wire from the June 15th meeting. Those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. Motion carries. We have no unfinished business. I need to swear in staff. Mr. Dawson, please raise your right hand. Do you swear that the testimony you give is true and correct to the best of your knowledge and belief?
I do.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Our first case tonight is ZMA 05-20, 8700, 8720, 8730, Cincinnati Dayton Road Properties. Uh, Mr. Dawson, um, you need to swear in, uh, anyone that plans on giving testimony tonight?
Yes, sir.
Forgot. Thank you.
All those who may give testimony in this evening's case, please stand where your hands are.
Do you swear that the testimony you give is true and correct to the best of your knowledge and belief?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry about that. Our first case tonight is ZMA 0520-20, 8700, 8720, 8730, Cincinnati Dayton Road Properties. Uh, Mr. Dawson, the staff reports, please.
Here we have a site aerial, a site highlighted in red and the surrounding vicinity. The site's located along the east side of Cincinnati Dayton Road and south of Crest Haven Avenue. The site consists of three parcels totaling 3.67 acres. Site's characterized as containing half of the existing post office, a vacant post office to the north, and further north, a vacant single failing dwelling. We have a couple ground view pictures of the site. This is from across the street with a view of the southeast. You can see the, uh, existing post office. Another view of the east, uh, the, uh, vacant post office. And, uh, another view of the east of the existing, uh, single family dwelling. The current zoning is, uh, R2 mainly, and a corner of the northern, uh, most property is R1 as well. As you can see on the 2013 recommendation for the land use, the, uh, the sites recommended as neighborhood retail along the Cincinnati Dayton Road frontage. The intent of this land use classification was to allow for low intensity, neighborhood-oriented retail and service uses that would provide a transition between the residential uses that achieve compatibility with and provide services to those adjacent residential areas. The applicant has stated the intention for the rezoning, uh, from R1 and R2 to B1 is to bring the current zoning into conformity with the recommended zoning and to market those properties for commercial use, meeting those B1 development standards. Township Zoning Commission is to recommend approval, approval with modification or denial of the submitted zoning map amendment. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Dawson. Do you have any questions for Tim?
I have none.
None?
No?
No, sir.
Okay. Would the applicant please come forward? Please state your name and address for the record. Hi, David. Did you have anything you'd like to add in addition to Mr. Dawson's staff report?
Sure. I think, uh, Tim did a good job just summarizing. Again, it goes with the, the land use plan for the, for the corridor there. Uh, the main thing to note is it cleans up the zoning of the, the new post office, which is split. Uh, the old, uh, the old post office, uh, currently they decided to come in with our application, but we don't have any plans with that site specific to us. Um, our, the applicant, uh, is the owner of the 8700 parcel, which is the northernmost parcel.
Okay, great. Do, uh, hang on one second. Do we have any questions for the applicant?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much, David. Okay, at this time we'd like to ask any proponents to come up and speak on behalf of this case. Are there any opponents that would like to speak against this case? Is there anyone with, uh, neutral information? Okay. Seeing there is none, we will close the public portion of our meeting and go into our deliberations. Richard? Anything?
I have no questions.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, I think it's a good plan for that area. Makes sense.
Yep.
Textbook. It's good to go.
Pretty simple, pretty straightforward. It's just a map amendment, so, yeah, they'll be back before us probably once or twice at least, uh...
I agree.
Yeah. Okay, very good. Uh, we need, um, would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I make a motion that we approve case number ZMA 05-20, 8700, 8720, and 8730, Cincinnati Dayton Road, Cincinnati Dayton Road, um, based on all staff's recommendations.
Sir, a second?
A second.
Good. The question is on the adoption of ZMA 05-20, 8700, 8720, 730, Cincinnati Dayton Road Properties to be approved by the zoning commission based on staff comments and other NCC recommendations. Is there any further discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, just for, just for clarification, I'd like to specify the second. Uh, Mr. Groh and Mr. Reiner kind of, kind of second at the same time. Just want to clarify for minutes.
You guys want?
Okay. So, a second by Mr. Reiner. Thank you.
Okay. And we have no further discussion? Mr. Dawson, roll call please.
Mr. Groh.
Yes.
Mr. Han.
Yes.
Mr. Murphy.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Congratulations. Motion carries, five to zero. Okay, um, our next case, um, I am going to be recusing myself, and, um, Mark Murphy will be, uh, acting as the chairman or vice chair for, for this second case.
Do you want to stay there?
It's a five minute recess.
Our second case tonight is, uh, case number FDP 07-20-A, The Oaks of Westchester, section six through eight. Uh, Mr. Dawson, can we have a staff report, sir? Uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Murphy, I need to swear in the second applicant. Thank you. All those who may give testimony in this evening's case, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear that, uh... Sir? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear that the, uh, testimony you give is true and correct to the best of your knowledge and belief?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Staff report, please.
Here we have a site aerial, uh, within the vicinity of the site. The overall residential planned unit development is highlighted in the dash yellow. Uh, this evening's case is for section six through eight, as highlighted in red. The site's located along Barrett Road. The overall site consists of 37.5 acres. Section six through eight are located on the southern ridge of the PUD site and extending south to Susan Springs Drive. The site's characterized as a heavily vegetated ridge on the south side of the valley within the middle of the overall PUD site. We have a, a few ground view pictures of the site. This is along Oakcrest Way with a, a view to the northeast. Again, with a view to the southwest. Here we have a, a view to the north along the cul-de-sac in section four. This is a view to the northeast within the, uh, future section six. Another view to the east. And a view to the northeast along section three. So, these views show you the change in grade from the entry along Barrett Road, uh, ascending, uh, to, uh, the township property, which would be adjacent, uh, to the northeast. The, uh, board trustees originally, uh, original approval was on July 8th of 2008. Subsequently, a revised preliminary plan and a revised final development plan was approved for the overall site and section one. Uh, subsequently, uh, sections, as highlighted on the revised preliminary plan on the left-hand side, sections, uh, one, two, three, four, and then five along the north portion of the PUD. And then on the right-hand side is the proposal for section six through eight. Um, the applicant's requesting 43 single-family residential lots and two open space lots. Uh, this would be a minimum of 15,000 square foot lot, uh, with yard depths of a 30-foot front, five on the side, a minimum of 20-foot between each house, and 30 feet in the rear. The overall site has a total of 17.3% open space, where the township requires 15%. The previous, previously approved preliminary plan and revised preliminary plan established the density subdivision layout, street widths, and all common elements and features. The proposed final development plan maintains consistency with both of those plans and conditions. Uh, it should be noted, as you can see on, uh, the revised preliminary, highlighted in yellow, or I'm sorry, orange, the, uh, path was originally illustrated, meandering down along the sou- southern ridge into the valley within that open space lot, uh, connecting, uh, to the natural trails within Keener Park, which is located on the township property adjacent to the east. The applicant has expressed, uh, that would be a permanent trail also. The applicant, uh, has expressed concerns with the, uh, permanent trail due to the feasibility and the steepness of the slopes, um, on the, uh, southern ridge. And, uh, the requirement of the ADA or ash tow, uh, safety and access requirements. Uh, the app, applicant originally proposed the connection, uh, as you can see on the right-hand side, the original submission of the final development plan, uh, with a connection through lot 107, connecting to the existing utility easement, which is a natural trail that, that currently exists to Keener Park, uh, given the steep grades. The county engineer's office, uh, stated they reference the ash tow for guidance only, not as a requirement. This is a, uh, a site view to the south. Um, this would be along the north side of the PUD within Keener Park, uh, the gas utility easement that I stated earlier. And this view is going to give you a, uh, a sense of the, the steepness. I believe the, the applicant said it's a 27, 27-degree slope. Uh, the southern ridge... Uh, the southern ridge would be sixteen degree slope, so it's a, it's a trap, it's pretty steep. And that's the current natural trail. Uh, the map plan you see there is the, uh, the subject site highlighted in red and the, uh, current Keener Park natural trail plan. So to give you an idea of, uh, where these connections would lead to, as well as, uh, Susan Springs Drive, as you can see on the right-hand side, um, just east of the property line on the final development plan, currently has an existing, uh, sidewalk trail that connects to that utility easement as well, which leads to the Keener Park. Uh, the connection through la- lot one oh seven, uh, staff had advised the applicant that it's, it would be unnecessary, uh, due to the, due to the connection that they would already have achieved. Bear with me, there's some lag in the response to this PowerPoint. Uh, due to the connection that would be achieved along the sidewalks within the subdivision over to Susan, Susan Springs, and the existing sidewalk within that easement. However, uh, staff has advised the applicant that it is important to still meet the intent of the approved path. Therefore, consideration should be given to require signage and maintenance of a natural path that would extend through, uh, the open space lot and along the same general direction as previously approved. A path connection then would exist that connects the entire sub- subdivision with the enjoyment of its largest open space area and with Keener Park through the, the adjacent natural gas line easement, which is currently maintained as a natural path as well. Staff has not received, uh, a complete review of the civil engineering plans from the county engineer's office or the, uh, water and sewer department at this time, however, the approving resolution would condition, uh, that the applicant meet all their comments at the permitting stage. Additionally, the, Butler County, uh, Water and Sewer Conservation District has stated lots ninety-three and ninety-four will need to be recorded with a conservation easement note due to the stream buffer requirements. So that, they're within seventy-five foot of the stream, and so the final plat will need to recognize that. Additionally, bear with me. It seems that some of my graphics are not coming up. Okay, so this plan, uh, illustrates the, uh, the grading and clearing limits, uh, of the site. There was some concern by the adjacent resident that, I'll just use the mouse pointer. There was some concern on the, uh, how the developer would, uh, maintain the existing tree line between this subdivision and Susan Springs subdivision. And, uh, you can see this dash line is the clearing limits the developer will maintain, um, but the, the future home builder and homeowner, uh, would then have, would have to clear further into that given the building restriction limits of those lots and the setbacks. But, the developer has also annotated a thirty-foot conservation easement along that east property line and a conservation easement note which limits the clearing, uh, of the size of trees within that, that easement, so. Uh, the other concern was that the sidewalks, um, are an additional, uh, two-foot width from what's existing in Susan Springs Drive, and the applicant stated they, they will taper those sidewalks down so that they meet, um, and connect. And then additionally, uh, the fire department did have some concerns with a secondary access that was required with the, the original preliminary plan. Um, and so, uh, the developer will, uh, connect to Susan Springs Drive, um, from Oakcrest Way, either, uh, either through Susan Springs or Barrett Road to maintain that secondary access. Uh, the developer stated that, uh, construction will occur in one phase, so it shouldn't be an, an issue connecting either roadways. The zoning commission is to approve, approve with modifications, or deny the submitted final development plan.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Dawson, um, any questions for Mr. Dawson? Mr. Reiner?
Would you be kind enough to point to the open space lot? I got a little bit confused on where the open space lot is.
So, if I go back to the trail plan, this is the open space lot which contains a permanent path through it, and then the natural trail would then run through that open space lot, highlighted in green, down across the ridge and around the, uh, retention pond, along the original approved pathway.
Okay.
To Keener Park.
Mr. Reiner, any questions? Mr. Whitehead, anything further?
I asked the only one I had, sorry.
Okay, okay. Mr. Grow, any questions? Pardon?
No questions.
Okay. Mr. Williams?
I have none.
I had a question about that path. It's a natural path, what does that mean, natural?
It'll be cut.
But I mean, currently it's natural, right?
No, there's no cut path.
There's nothing there right now?
No, so it's just heavily vegetated, uh, but the developer will, uh, include in the HOA declaration that they, uh, once it's turned over to the HOA, the developer will establish it.
So they will?
Yeah, once it's turned over to the HOA, then they'll, they'll have to maintain a cut path,
Okay.
along that direction.
Okay, um, would the applicant please come forward and please, uh, state your name and address for the record, please?
Take a deep breath here. Uh, John Delverne with Bear Becker.
Say that one more time, a little louder?
Can I do this? John Delverne with Bear Becker, sixty-nine hundred Tyler'sville Road, Mason, Ohio, four-five-zero-four-zero. Uh, we're the engineer, uh, on the project.
Thank you, John.
Um, just a couple of things, just wanted to add a couple of things, first, this is the last section of the project, so final section, our intent is to build all that you see there, as long as weather holds out this year, um, but our intent is to build it all in one, in one, um, in one construction phase, so hopefully before, uh, the weather gets bad this year. Um, the trail, um, well, let me go back to the conservation, so I did want to just add one thing. It doesn't show on the graphics, but we did add the thirty-foot conservation easement, I apologize to him for missing that.
Hey, excuse me, John, would you look at us, please?
Oh yeah, sorry for missing that.
It's okay, it's okay.
Missing that, uh, ahead of time, but we did resubmit a plan today with the thirty-foot conservation easement on lots one oh seven. All the lots along the east property line, we did add.
Okay.
That language, we added language to the plan, it's, uh, C two-point-oh, that will show up on the record plat, that language prevents the property owner, as Tim referenced, the, um, builder or subsequent owner of the lots, from removing, uh, healthy trees, uh, I think larger than three inches, from the, from the easement.
Okay.
Um, trail grades, uh, can we go back to the trail? Well, go ahead, go ahead and stay there, I'm sorry, so just, just to, just to start here, um, there we go. The blue is going to be a six-foot concrete path, it'll be permanent, so the, the green represents where the natural trail will start, and this is where it gets really steep, it's really steep down through here, uh, it's about sixteen percent on this side of the valley. It'll flatten out a little bit as we come around our detention basin and head, head over to Keener Park, which is over here. Tim, do you have the, um, the park, I think you had a snippet of it?
Yeah.
In there? We did an overlay of our site, um, and it did show up, I think on the upper left, on one of the slides. Who does that, I need this. There it is. But we did, I think, kind of an overlay of, the park has a trail plan on the, on their website, which is what you see to the right, and then we just overlaid it onto here. And the red indicates all of the trails that they have on site, I think the yellow is actually a bike trail. But the red indicates the trails that, network that we're tying into in Keener Park. And those are all natural trails, I've walked, I've walked about half of them, and like I said, some of these are a lot steeper, um, than even our trail, so we're basically replacing this natural, we're providing a natural trail and tying into, uh, trails that are natural as well. So, I think it's a similar, similar proposal on both sides of the property line there. Uh, we did, just a couple other notes, we did, or final note, we did, uh, receive comments from Butler County Water and Sewer Department, we are addressing those, um, but we have not received, uh, review comments from the engineer's office, so we're inquiring about those, uh, because we're anxious to get started, so we want to get the plans approved. So, and that's all I have to offer.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Oh, hold on, one second.
Sure.
Any questions for the applicant?
I have one, if it may, so, are, do they plan to open that road up then from Susan Drive down to, uh, to Demick, or?
Yeah, to Barrett, yes.
Yeah, to Barrett.
Yeah, so our section is this section here.
Mm-hmm.
This is just a big open space, really, yeah, so it, it'll have that Su- uh, the extension of Susan, uh, Springs to Barrett Road will be included.
Will be part of that, that construction will happen when you get to start.
Okay. And we're, by resolution, we're required to, at this point, we need to make at least a secondary connection, and, uh, that'll satisfy that, um,
Well, it said either end, right?
Either, yeah, I think it could have went either, it was just a secondary access point, but our intention is to build, to build it all this year.
To build a straight through?
Yeah.
Well, will that, that'll be, I've had people ask me about it, so up in there and Susan Springs up in there, so when will that road open up, do you think?
Um, my guess is, my guess is probably sometime in the fall. Would you agree, Steve? There's a lot of dirt to move.
It's alright, close enough this year, man.
Yeah, it's, our intention is to get it in this, this, this year.
Alright. Anybody else? Mr. Williams?
No questions.
Questions for the applicant?
No questions.
Okay.
I have none.
Okay.
I, I have a question, um, it's just that natural path, how do you create a natural path, and how do you?
Well, I think our,
What does that mean to you?
What is it, well, it's going to be, it's going to be a, a path that's going to be mowed, and then it's going to be walked on.
I mean, just like,
It's going to be natural.
I mean, is it going to be like flat where you can't, I mean, are you going to, um, excavate it somehow, or just can't?
We'll probably have to run something down through there to kind of flatten out the, the actual width of it, but it's, I mean, it's going to be similar to what's provided in the park, which are, you know, they're bare earth trails.
Got you, you're right, yeah, I agree. And it says also that you're going to put up a sign, is that true?
You know, um, there were some signs, I, we haven't, I haven't really talked to staff about what the intent of that is, um, but I don't believe we have a problem with calling out the, the paths.
Okay.
So I really haven't thought through where signage would go, or what it would, quite honestly, what it would even say.
Is that something, Tim, we can address?
Yeah, the, the sign, the signage will be conditioned, basically it's for wayfinding, so,
Okay.
with the, the, the permanent path through the open space lot, will probably require some signage to show that there's a natural path, and then along that signa- or along that path further down, connecting with Keener Park.
Is that something we should deliberate in, in the closed meeting?
The applicant will work with staff at the permitting stage.
Okay.
I mean, it says, Keener Park, first way or something.
I have, I have drafted the condition to require the, the wayfinding signage.
Okay, yeah, because I, I would like to see a sign there so people know, you know, where they're walking towards, for safety purposes.
Mr. Dawson, just for clarification purposes, did I hear you earlier say that that was a natural gas easement down there?
Yeah, it's a CG&E or a Duke Energy Easement, there's actually two easements contained in there, so the electric, the power lines, and the, uh, the natural gas line.
So, for that purpose, Mr. Murphy, I think that's one of the reasons, you know, you want to keep it non-asphalt.
Right.
You know, so. And a deforester, you know, with gravel, that's pretty much how you create it.
Yeah. I just know sometimes those can get wild, and get real natural, pretty quick, if not maintained. Who maintains it, the HOA?
I was going to add that the, uh, it's going to be added to the, um, HOA documents.
Okay.
Or, that's going to be area added to the HOA's responsibility to maintain the path.
Common easement, an easement?
Um, we probably should put an easement on there, it should be a public use easement, actually.
A public use easement will be recorded on the final plat for the trail, and then their declaration of covenants for their HOA will add the easement maintenance.
Okay.
Any more questions? Okay, thanks, John.
Alright, thank you.
Uh, next up, um, do we have any proponents, that means somebody that is for this project? Please, uh, when you come up here, state your name and address, so we can hear you.
Steve Bossy, um, one-one-zero-two-five Reed Hartman Highway, I'm the developer.
Okay.
And, uh, it's our last phase, and, um, it's been very successful. Uh, we're looking forward to completing this this year. Uh, hopefully we can get our plat recorded, if not, it'd be spring of, or early winter, I guess, of next year, but, uh, we have completed the pool house there. Unfortunately, with the coronavirus, uh, we weren't able to open the thing without some serious liability, uh, but it is done. Um, housing is doing very, very well there, and, uh, we're excited to get this last phase in. When it comes to the path and the signage, what we'll do is, um, you know, we can do signs in there that says, you know, Keener Park with an arrow, that type of stuff, uh, and we'll work with Tim on that and, uh, figure out some kind of signage. But, we're excited to get going, and we appreciate you, uh, your time in looking at this. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, hold on, any, any questions?
I have none.
Oh, he doesn't, we wouldn't ask you questions, I guess, okay, thanks, Steve. Next up, any opponents, anybody that is not in favor? Please come up, sir?
If you'd be kind enough to, uh, state your, uh, full name and address loud, so we can hear it.
Danny Leach, seventy-two-twenty Susan Springs Drive.
What's your first name?
Danny Leach. Yeah, I, uh, I intended to offer neutral information prior to hearing what I just heard. What you guys have heard i- as a commission for the last four or five years is that there would be permanent access that would be paved into Keener Park. I am an adjoining owner on Susan Springs, and we have paved access from Keener Meadows subdivision. Um, that is the only second entrance that's not on Barrett Road to Keener Park, and we get a considerable amount of traffic into Keener Park from that access. Um, my concern is that, without doing what was discussed in the, their, uh, preliminary and the revised, is that you're going to just force that traffic over to that paved path. It's, it's steep, it, um, it, it, there's a paved path that goes through an easement on my property, it can be done. Uh, that, that was what was proposed, and, and I believe that's what the commission could, should consider. The remainder of my questions, some of them have been addressed, I, I, uh, sent those to Mr. Dawson, I think some of you already have those. Um, based on the commitment to preserve the tree line within the easement, thirty-foot tree line, um, my question is, since this is the first access from an existing subdivision, how much is intended to be cut back from the center line? It, allegedly, that's, that's going to be some of the trees that are on my property, so I'm, I'm curious about that. And I, I have a number of questions, I don't know how you want to, I, I can go ahead with the questions and be happy to leave a copy up here.
Tim, how would you want to address that?
Well, we can, we can scale the, uh, the, the, you know, the illustration on your clearing and grading plan.
Okay.
Uh, or, I could get Mr. Leach a more, uh, clear answer tomorrow, when I have some time at the office.
Okay.
But, uh, basically, if I can go back to that clearing and grading plan. Uh, so as you can see here, it's not, you can't see it very well on the, the, the slide, I did have some graphics that, uh, highlighted it, uh, but for some reason, it's not showing up, but, uh, we can see there, the developer's going to be doing some grading work along lot one-eleven, and so the tree line, uh, you can see vaguely that it kind of makes this path up to where they're grading and then terminates here at the property line, so, uh, I don't know, approximately thirty-five foot from the rideaway. The rideaway's a public rideaway, so- So it's typically a 60-foot wide right away that would connect to Susan Spring Drive. And then, uh, you can see a better illustration with the grading here with the existing tree line that would then terminate at this point, maybe five foot back from the, the right away. So that's an approximation. I can scale it tomorrow at my office and get you a clear dimension of that.
Can you point out where the gentleman's lot is?
His, his lot is adjacent to Lot 110. Keeping in mind that this is the clearing limits of the developer. Once the home builder goes in there, then he'll be subject to the setbacks, which is the 30-foot front, five on the side, 30 in the rear, subject to a 30-foot conservation easement off of that east property line as well. So they'll need to fill, fit the building footprint within this building restriction line. So some additional clearing will occur, but they will not be able to clear past the 30-foot easement on the east property line, which would be this line here.
Danny, another question you had?
Yes, and, and just for the, for the record, that was, uh, that was a neutral comment. The, the exist, the, the previous comment was in opposition.
Okay, you're right.
Regarding the path. So the rest of it will be neutral as well.
Okay.
Regarding the continuation of Susan Springs, it appears the design plan, the architecture, including the curb line, the gutter, the pavement, existing street and sidewalk exist in the right away. Is, the sidewalk does not extend to match. I think I heard Mr. Dawson express that that would be extended to match and would be tapered.
Yes.
Okay. That addresses that. I was concerned with your pathing that would happen through, uh, natural traffic from foot traffic. Thank you for that. Question about the minimum safe clearance on overhead power lines that exist currently above the continuation of Susan Springs Drive. What, what is the minimum safe clearance of that on a, on a secondary road?
That's a good question. I don't have the answer to that. Tim, do you know?
I'm not quite sure I understand the, I know that Duke regulates tree plantings within their easement. I think you're only allowed a 15-foot high tree maximum at maturity. I'm not sure if that answers the, the question on clearance within the power lines.
So the, the question is, this is a, primarily, this, this continuation will exist to satisfy a request from the fire department for emergency services. A ladder truck needs clearance to, to clear those power lines. What is the minimum safe clearance for overhead power lines on a secondary road?
Yeah, I think, is that something we can get back to Danny on?
You're talking, you must be talking about power lines that cross Susan Drive? Is that correct?
Well, they don't cross it yet, but yes. In the proposed, in the final development plan, they would, yes.
Okay. So Duke has, has to approve?
Yeah, I, I did not receive any comments from the fire department on clearance issues. Their only comment was that, that some, some type of secondary access be constructed with the initial phase, which would be achieved, since there's only one phase of construction. And they could connect to Barrett or Susan Springs at that point. But no comments on the clearance of the, the power lines. Maybe the applicant's engineer could speak better to that.
Do we have an engineer here?
All right, just, Steve, hold on for one second. Danny, you want to?
Sure. The existing plans, the, the plans as I saw them, do not locate the 20-inch gas main that we previously heard about that exists within the 30-foot utility easement where the street will continue. Is a site survey planned regarding subservice utilities? If a crossing agreement exists for this encroachment, from whom can I obtain that agreement? A concern is the age of the pipeline, construction over top of the pipeline induced vibration. Those sorts of things are, are all concerns for a pipeline that's 20-inch main pipeline. So I'd like to understand the precautions that will be taken.
That goes beyond my expertise, so.
So we do not have any comments from the county engineer on the civil, um, civil plans at this point. But we're conf, I'm confident that at the permitting stage, the applicant will be meeting all the public standards for roadways and construction and those easements that need to be obtained to make those connections. Again, the applicant's engineer could probably better answer that.
I think you addressed my question before about when the anticipated continuation of the street would, would occur. Can, uh, I'd like to request that construction traffic continue to enter through the existing development and that the, the new entrance not be designated a construction entrance or at least be designated as not available to construction equipment.
Tim, what do you think about that?
That's a construction. I don't.
I mean. I mean, it's, it's.
It's going to be up to the developer, right?
I'd like to, I'd like to defer to legal on that. I mean, limiting access to a public roadway.
Yeah, I, I, especially if the fire department's requiring that as a secondary access. I'm not sure that, that we would, uh, that'd be a great idea to, to limit the access to that. If I understood your question, are you, are you asking that construction traffic come through the existing development and not go straight in to the, to the connected Susan Springs portion?
That's correct.
Yeah, you're also, I mean, I, I would suggest you're, you're inviting a lot of unhappy neighbors in those parts by routing construction traffic further through, through the development. I, I don't know that there's necessarily a legal answer to this. I, I think restricting, you can encourage the developer to do it. It, it's also going to be an enforcement issue of who's going to go out there and monitor where the construction trucks are pulling in.
A lot, a lot of the issues we've had with new subdivisions is that a lot of delivery drivers and construction workers, they navigate by GPS. So if their easiest route is through Susan Springs, that's the way they're going to come, unfortunately. Given the way that the surrounding residence subdivisions are laid out, I think the easiest access way would be off of Barrett.
Yeah.
Myself, but who knows where they're coming from?
Okay. Anything else, sir?
Yes. I appreciate the addition of the island that, for the, the continuation of Susan Springs Drive. I have questions about the dimensions of the island, the type of curb, and what the content of the island, island would consist of. My assumption, based on the existing Oaks development, is that it would match the existing island at the entrance or the island on Oak Crest Way, which is north of Laurel Oaks. That would be to achieve a consistent design aesthetic. So I, I just would like to see that that island be matched the rest of the islands with the, the same type of vegetation in the center. And then I'd, I'd also like to see the dimensions. Those dimensions were not on the, the final plan.
Good.
This has potentially been addressed. The minutes captured in the meeting on the 21st of 20, uh, April 21st, 2014, Mrs. Leach expressed concern regarding the tree line. Mr. Bearman stated that the final development stage, the developer will show that on the plan. And this, uh, this would be the 30-foot conservation area that we've already spoken about. That conservation area, in my understanding, would be untouchable by residents, developers, anyone. So that's, um, my understanding is that's already in the plan that has been generated?
That's what we said earlier, correct?
I'm sorry, what was that?
About the 30-foot in terms of the tree line that's going to be reserved?
Yes, plan's been revised to annotate that.
Yeah, and, and again, just reinforcing that, um, that path that you guys have seen throughout all of these plans into Keener Park, that's critically important because we're just going to drive existing traffic from that subdivision over into Keener Meadows and down the path on my easement. I'm happy to have naturegoers. I, I have met a lot of nice people. But there's a main entrance to the park. If there's, if that's intended to be an entrance, it should match what exists from Keener Meadows. There, there's, there's precedent there.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Danny.
Appreciate it.
Is it okay, Steve, if you came back up here and addressed some of those issues? One was the gas, the pipe, the, the gas line?
Yeah.
The other one was the, the islands?
Yeah, it's John Delverne with, with Bear Becker. Yeah, so the gas main, um, we know, we know the gas main exists. We will, um, typically at the stage once we get through review comments, then we will submit the plans to Duke Energy. They'll design their system, and we'll work with all the existing utilities at that time.
Okay.
So that's to come. On the, all of our proposed, um, electric, gas, telephone cable, all that's going to be underground. I'll check if there is, I know there's an overhead line that does run through there. I can check the clearance on that. I believe the clearance is, uh, we can check with the fire department. Typically, it's 13.6, maybe a little higher on a roadway. Let's see what they want.
And maybe some, maybe get back to Danny somehow with that height, so we?
Yeah, I'll, I'll follow up with him.
Okay, thank you. The island question, the matching islands?
Oh, the island, um, quite honestly, we revised the plan recently. I proposed to remove the island. To me, it looked like a, just an obstacle in the way for snowplows and, and looked insignificant. So I'll leave that up to you. But we proposed to remove the island. So it does not currently show on our plans. That island was proposed right there. It was on your initial submittal, but subsequent revisions, we did remove it.
Okay.
Matter of fact, I don't think it shows on that plan, yeah. So it must, looks like it's removed on that plan.
Okay.
What's the purpose?
I'm sorry.
Purpose of the island is purely aesthetics, or does it slow down traffic?
You know, I, I don't, I, I didn't see what the purpose was. That's why I proposed to remove it. To me, it, it looked like a hazard in the middle, an obstacle in the middle of the roadway. So.
And as I stated in your staff report, the, the police department did have the comment for maintaining line of sight with the connection to Susan Springs. So that was one of their concerns as well.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have none.
I have to wait. Mr. Grubb?
So originally, when the whole development was designed, did it have the path that was blacktopped and not using the, the ground that utilities run over or run underneath it?
Yes, it was, um, it was, uh, is a paved 10-foot wide multipurpose path. And when I started to look into this section and look into, like I said, I think Tim had mentioned that the Butler County Engineers' Office required this ash-toe design, which is highway type of a design. But it's a group that does, that makes standards for highways. But they also have a pedestrian bicycle path, um, design manual. And it just did not, was not consistent with what was out there. First of all, we, we would not be able to achieve the grades that that plan or those guidelines required because of the steepness of the existing terrain. And secondly, we were tying into natural paths. I mean, we're tying, you know, we're tying into paths that are not bicycle friendly that have, that have staircases, wooden staircases in between or, um, logs as to help gain footing to walk up some of those even steeper trails on the north side of the creek. So there was a disconnect there. I, I didn't, you know, we weren't involved. I was not involved in the original plans. I wasn't sure of the intent, but it looked like there was a real big disconnect to me with what the plan was for that trail to what I saw in the field. So we met out there. I met Steve out in the field. We walked it, and he agreed with me. That's when we contacted Tim. Said, hey, let's go out and take a look at this. What makes sense here? You know, I will say, I'm very hesitant to put in a paved trail, something improved, that doesn't meet accessibility guidelines. Yeah, one thing, if people are walking down the trail and creating a path, but it's another if it's, if it's something that's not accessible. That's my biggest concern.
Second question. The houses that go to the 30-foot tree line, when they're sold or the lots sold, that the property only goes to the edge and that the HOA owns that 30-foot and maintains that 30-foot?
So along, so here, this 30-foot easement?
Right.
Your conservation easement here? No, it's, it's really a restriction. The language reads as a restriction, um, for the lot owner, prevent them from clearing any healthy trees greater than three inches in diameter. So.
So the property line goes to the end of that 30?
Yeah, the, yeah, so the 30 would, so the red is really the property line. The 30 will be, you know, just out here a little bit.
So who enforces that, um, that 30 feet? The HOA? If neighbors stop going in there?
You know, Steve, I don't know if you're familiar with that. I don't believe so. I could read the language. I bet you it's more of a civil matter than, than anything.
More what?
Would be a civil matter, would be my guess. I'm not an attorney, by the way. But, and I could read the language that we're going to put on the, or it's on the existing plats for the same, the same easement.
Value of the lots has increased by trees, so you can't imagine anybody going in there and cutting it down.
Yeah, but they could though.
There's always that one person that will.
Yeah.
Can he address it? Yeah.
Mr. Boss, I think Mr., Mr. Boss, you may have some information.
That's the developer.
You'll have to be up on.
Steve Bossy, right in interest. That 30-foot goes around pretty much the whole perimeter of the property that, and it's worked very well. We have not had any issues. And it's part of, it's a deed restriction on that lot.
That the HOA doesn't have authority to?
No, the HOA does, it's, the owner of that lot, but it's a deed restriction on his lot.
Yeah.
That is a civil issue?
Yeah.
Okay.
They would have to.
So it's protected then?
Correct.
Yeah, i- if, if somebody felt like they were aggrieved by it, they'd have to sue the property owner.
Okay. That was helpful. Thank you, Mr. Boss. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, um, any more neutral information? Okay. Sir, please come on up and state your name and address clearly. As possible.
Hi, my name is Vic Opresh. I live at 7217 Susan Springs Drive. Just a couple of questions. The lack of an island's somewhat of a safety concern. Cars park to access Keener Park, right between Mr. Leach's property and, and where I live. Children park their bikes there. So from Barrett Road all the way to Susan Springs is going to be a straight shot without some sort of way to reduce the speed. So I just want to call out the fact that, you know, there is a concern about traffic and speed because that's a area that a lot of people gather to go to the park.
Off of Barrett?
Off Susan Springs. So where they're connecting the road.
Right, okay.
Yeah, and the pictures that were available last week to view did show an island. So the testimony that the island was not intended is somewhat deceiving. The other question I have, since we won't restrict, restrict Susan Springs as a construction access, will notice be given to residents that live in that pathway or adjacent to it that one construction will begin? So we can sort of brace ourselves for all the activity?
We can condition that.
I think it will be pretty obvious only once they start.
It'd be nice to get a heads up that.
It'd be nice to get a heads up. That's just common municipal, municipal practice. So we can, we can condition that.
They're saying fall, so fall's three months away.
Yeah. Okay. Then the last question. My property will be in front of or behind, however you look at it, Lot 103.
Where is that on there? Mr. Dawson, can you take the mouse there so we can see that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's got that long rectangular lot there.
Okay.
So my question, does the 30-foot barrier pertain along that tree line there as well? Because there's a few mature trees and some honeysuckle. Not that that's pretty, but it still blocks the view from.
You just said earlier that it's 30 feet all the way around the whole development.
Yes. Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Right. All right. Thank you, Nick, appreciate it. Okay, we will close this portion.
Mr. Mr., I think we should call back up the applicant just to kind of find out if they will provide that answer as far as start of construction notification.
Okay, would that be John?
That's not a problem. And as far as what we've done in other developments, I, I just really don't see our construction traffic going through Susan Springs. It's a long way around, it's difficult to get through.
Yeah.
We can put a sign at the, at the end of our property, the start of theirs, that says no construction traffic. We've done it in many, many developments, works fine. I just, honestly, I mean, with what we're developing, people are gonna come in, our development, and construction traffic's gonna go out Barrett Road. I mean, it just, it makes sense. It's a lot quicker, it's easier. Nobody's gonna wind through Susan Springs to get, I honestly, I've never gone through Susan Springs to get, to even see what that looks like over on the end. Just because it's, it's hard to get to.
It's windy.
It is, and so everybody will come, but I'll be more than happy to put a sign up that says no construction traffic. We could certainly notify the surrounding property owners when we're gonna start construction. Not a problem.
So you will put up the sign?
Yes, we will do that.
Great comfort level.
Yep, not a problem. We do it, we do it all the time.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Williams, is that good?
That's fine with me.
And just, let me just again say this, we'll close the public portion of the meeting and we're going to go into our deliberation. Mr. Reiner, any questions, sir?
No.
Mr. Whited, any questions, sir? Mr. Grow, any questions?
Mine have been answered, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Williams, sir?
Pretty straightforward. I know people were concerned about the path, but he's right. There's no way you can really comply twenty-seven degrees, that ADA compliance, and that's, it's dangerous. It's even dangerous to even consider it, to be honest with you. So I think the natural path is the only way to go.
I think it's, yeah, I think it's, I think it's okay as well. I do, and I think it's natural to kind of feature it in a keener if they put a sign up. I think, I mean, I was driving through that neighborhood Saturday and Sunday, and it's a great, great neighborhood. And I live at four-four-six-seven Tyler's Terrace, and right behind my house, they're building, and we have a lot of construction traffic. Trucks, you know, they, they do drive fast sometimes, but I wish I had a thirty-foot tree. I have like three or four trees and the house is right behind me. So I think that it's a very nice subdivision, and I think they're doing a good job back there, so.
I'm good with it.
Are we ready to make a?
Yeah, I'm good with it too. I think it's a good project. They've answered all of the concerns, I believe, and.
And I think staff has everything as well with all the follow-up. And he's done the signage and getting back with Danny over there with all of his answers and.
Yes, the two, two main issues were the review of the civil plans from the county engineer and our sewer department, and then I will follow up with Mr. Leach on his concerns as well.
Okay. Are we ready to move forward on this?
Yes, we are.
Okay, the question is on the adoption of the motion that FDP zero-seven dash two-zero dash A, the Oaks of Westchester, section six through eight, be approved by zoning commission based on staff comments and other agency recommendations. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Would that motion include the addition of notification of construction timeframe?
Yes, that would. Yes, that would.
So we should, do we need to?
Do we need to reamend that?
Add as, as a condition? Mr. Dawson?
Correct. In addition to keeping all construction roadways clear of debris, I will add the condition that, that the applicant notified the, the adjacent property owners applicable to the ORC requirement within two-hundred feet of the, the site boundary.
And there'll also be a sign, too, a construction sign?
Correct.
Correct, okay.
And that was condition number three.
Condition number three, okay.
That'll be condition number thirteen.
Oh, thirteen, I'm sorry, I'm looking at, yeah, I'm looking at the resolution, so.
That's, that's condition number thirteen, so.
To, to add condition number thirteen.
Okay, so let's ask for another motion. Do we have a motion? Are we good?
So do we need to restate basically that?
Do we need to restate it, Tim?
I think we should.
Okay. The whole thing again?
Just, just the, the portion that we're adding.
Okay, we're adding the portion to be approved by zoning commission with the adding of the signs, that we clean up debris. What was the other thing, Tim?
Construction start.
Notification to.
And, and the notification to the neighbors of when it would start, when construction would start. Do we have a motion to approve?
A motion that we approve.
Okay.
Second.
Do you have a second? Any further discussion? Mr. Dawson, would you please call roll?
Mr. Grow?
Approve.
Mr. Murphy?
Approved.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Whited?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion carries five-zero. Thank you very much for coming.
Good luck to you.
Thank you. Okay, a little housekeeping here. Administrative matters, we have none. Communication is a lanish business. Our next meeting is Monday, August seventeenth at six PM. This will serve as public notice of that meeting. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
The question is on the adjournment of the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We are adjourned.
Well done, thank you.